They're ready.
All right, we'll get started. Thanks, everyone. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Monday, April 20. Monday, April 26, 2021, Plan Commission Meeting and Commission for Citizen Involvement. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Iris, would you please call the roll? Sorry, Iris, I think you're on mute. We're ready for the roll call.
Beckett? Fisher?
Here.
Beckett? Can you hear me? Heap?
Here.
Leek?
Here.
Pepe?
Here.
Semler?
Here.
I think we got everyone, Iris?
Not, not yet. We're, there's a lag, longer lag than normal. So give it just a second. We... Stewart?
Here.
I think that's it.
All right, we have Coram. Thanks for everyone for joining. First on our agenda tonight is a council update. We have Counselor and Boop with us. Counselor and Boop, would you like to give us a council update?
Yes, I think, you know, we don't have a lot of things, but the last meeting, we endorsed the, the design for the North Anchor, and I think now we're gonna wait for them to have all the things. We also had a memo and an MOU with the city, that between the, it's an IGA between the city and the school district that was gonna, you know, be expired, and we gave the authority to the city manager to continue to do that. And we also talked about the Hamlet. It's, it's an important issue, I think, that you will hear about. It's about the Stafford Hamlet. They want to revise the IGA with the three, three cities and even with, with Metro. I don't, I, maybe Scott can tell us more about that because I have a problem with that. I really don't understand. I support that the Stafford becomes what it is right now, but what they want is not very sure. We have the city planners and city employees will give us more understanding on that before we make decisions about that. And of course, we are, we know some about the budget. We have a budget meeting on Wednesday, and after then our next meeting, I will update. I think that's for now what is going on in the city. And of course, we also talk about another important issue about the use of fireworks. The chief was there. We are continuing the discussion, and he'll give us more information about, you know, either banning fireworks. Of course, there's some fireworks that are already banned by the state, but deciding to ban them except for Fourth of July, but at any moment, it's something we are talking about. It's what I have for now.
All right, thank you, Counselor and Boop.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions for the councilor?
Yeah, what's this about the Stafford Hamlet, Scott?
Yeah, Commissioner Beckett, I believe that Counselor and Boop is referring to the Stafford Hamlet's request that the cities all jointly adopt a vision statement, or at least recognize the Hamlet's vision statement, which they've updated recently, to be much more specific about land conservation, specifically agricultural preserves and the use of conservation easements to try to preserve the rural character in the Stafford Basin. So, you know, this is something that I think that the Hamlet has revised recently, and I know that they presented to each of the three cities. And I know that there's been some discussion on the Westland Council. When they presented to the Tuolitan Council, there really wasn't much discussion really, and our council had only, you know, heard about or received the information for the first time at your, at your most recent meeting. So I think we will be hearing more about this. And I know I've, I've talked with the city manager Bennett, and so we're going to be reaching out to the other two cities just to make sure as we move forward, we do already have an agreement with our neighboring cities. And so I think the council's, you know, priority is to maintain the integrity of that agreement and see where we can find common ground with our neighbors. If I, if you think that's a fair statement, Counselor and Boop. Yeah, that's my understanding.
Yeah, that's true. That's, yeah.
Vice Chair Pepe?
Um, am I on mute?
Okay, you're on muted. We can hear you.
Councilman, could you please explain what the MOU was with the school district?
Let me read it for you. It's more important. It's, it's something, it's before us, so. It's, it's something, it was an... Okay, am I here? Okay. Sorry about that. I have to...
I'll sort if I may. The MOU is to extend the time to complete negotiations on intergovernmental agreement for the construction and operation of a jointly run, if you will, recreation aquatic center on the Gulf Coast area.
Yeah. That's, that's it. Yeah.
Commissioners, any other questions? I see none. So thank you, Counselor and Boop, for giving us the update tonight. I appreciate it. Next on the agenda is item number four, citizen comment. This is regarding issues not on the agenda. Opportunity to raise issues regarding planning. A time limit of three minutes per individual applies. Iris, was there anyone who wished to provide citizen comment tonight?
No one signed up.
Okay, so we'll move on. Then, next on the agenda is Commission for Citizen Involvement, general updates. I didn't have any commissioners, any general updates for Commission for Citizen Involvement? None. And we'll move on to the minutes. So tonight, we have the review of the April 12, 2021, Plan Commission and Commission for Citizen Involvement meeting minutes. Commissioners, were there any changes, clarifications, or other requests that commissioners have regarding to the April 12, 2021 meeting minutes?
I'll make the motion to accept the minutes.
A second?
There's a motion by Commissioner Fisher to accept the minutes, and Commissioner Leek, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? None? Any abstains?
I will abstain. I was not present.
Right. The minutes are approved. Next on the agenda is item 7.1. This is the Short Term Rentals Amendment to Ordinance 2815 to Remove or Extend the Sunset Clause, PP 21-0004. Public testimony is accepted. Five minutes per individual applies. To provide testimony, folks wishing to provide testimony should have emailed Iris at the email address on the agenda by noon today. I know we do have a few individuals who would like to give testimony. So if anybody hasn't, I would say, reach out to Iris by emailing her at the address on the agenda. The Plan Commission will make a recommendation to the city council on a proposed ordinance to amend Ordinance 2815, Section 4, to either remove the sunset clause or to extend the repeal to a later date. Staff Coordinator is Scott Siegel, Director of Planning and Building Services. Director Siegel, did you want to give us an introduction?
Thank you, Chair Heap. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. This item is before you. As the city council has requested, the Planning Commission conduct a public hearing and receive input on the sunset provision that is part of the short-term rental amendments, code amendments that the city council adopted in 2019. And those amendments came with a two-year, basically a two-year deadline in which the city would review whether or not to extend the ordinance or, or remove the sunset provision altogether and allow the, the short-term rental regulations to remain. In any event, whatever you decide to recommend this evening, the city council, you know, always has the ability to review any policy, you know, issue or refer any land use matter to the Planning Commission and could decide at some point in the future if it was, if they felt it was in the public interest to repeal the ordinance. So notwithstanding, you know, the sunset provision that is in the ordinance, which you may recommend to extend or, or remove as you, as you see fit, there is the ability for the city council to, you know, change the law, so to speak, or change the code if they felt that that was necessary. So I do know that they, they value your, your input, and although this is not a land use regulation that the sunset provision that is part of the ordinance, the council is interested in hearing your recommendation on this. So I'm not, I do not have a presentation or the type of presentation that we would, you know, typically give for a land use hearing because we are not reviewing this proposal against the policies or the criteria on the comprehensive plan. It is simply a question of whether or not to remove the sunset provision or extend it to a date so that the city could review the ordinance at some point in the future. Having said that, I feel that I should provide a little bit of background on the ordinance and what it is. So in the staff report, as it, as it summarizes, the policy and the code provisions were adopted in 2019, and they were put in place so that the city could begin to allow what are called short-term rentals or transient lodging of less than 31 days, consecutive days, in residential areas. So we do have hotels, of course. We have transient lodging in certain commercial zones. However, this is different because these are typically accommodations that residents provide in their home, and they're subject to the limitations of home occupations or home businesses that are allowed for, that are allowed in all residential zones. And so they're really, you know, akin to other types of home businesses that residents may operate, although the code does have certain allowances that are different than other types of home businesses. For example, other types of home businesses are limited to not more than 25% of the floor area in a building or in a home and its accessory structures. The short-term rentals are allowed to occur in an entire home or in a portion of a home. There is a requirement that the owner of the lot makes that property their primary residence. So there was really an intent to not have absentee owners or for short-term rentals to become a collection of mini hotels, you know, scattered about our neighborhoods. So that, that requirement that I believe the Planning Commission had recommended as part of the ordinance, and there are other provisions that require that they get a home, excuse me, that they get a business license. And, you know, the, the regulations are in, in the ordinance there, so I won't, I won't belabor it. Those are really not the matters that are the subject of the public hearing. But I did want to let you know that we do have standards for short-term rentals, and they're in the class of home occupations. The staff has prepared a summary of, of short-term rentals that have listed online and those that have business licenses. That is in the attachment to, to the staff report. And I have our senior code enforcement specialist, Bill Youngblood, is joining us this evening. So if you have any questions about short-term rentals or the types of, you know, code enforcement issues that arise with short-term rentals, he's available to answer any questions. The, kind of the takeaway of that is that we have not seen a significant number of complaints or concerns that have arisen over the past nearly two years that the ordinance has been in effect. Having said that, of course, we've been coping with COVID for, you know, the past year. So there's that. On the other hand, though, what I would mention is that in the public testimony that you've received and just anecdotally and feedback that I've received from, from residents, short-term rentals have continued to operate. Some have even opened, you know, during the past year and subject to Oregon Health Authority regulations have been able to operate. So they are, you know, operating today, and really the, you know, the occurrence of or the frequency of complaints that we've received have not been out of, really out of the scale relative to the other types of code enforcement concerns that the city hears about. And those calls have been addressed, I think, and the concerns have been resolved fairly easily, considering some of the concerns that we were prepared for when we began this endeavor of allowing short-term rentals. So without belaboring that, I'll just say that we're here to answer your questions. You have received seven letters, I believe, that are part of the public record exhibits, one through seven. And I believe we do have some members of the public who are signed up to speak this evening. So with that, I will conclude my presentation and ask if you have any questions.
Sure. Thank you, Director Siegel. So first, we'll allow the commissioners to ask questions, and then we'll try to quickly get to those who wish to make a public comment tonight. So commissioners, questions? Commissioner Stewart, I saw you first.
There's a, there's a statement towards the end of the staff report which says, "A person who owns a lot containing a short-term rental must maintain their primary residence on the lot. The owner is not required to be on the lot when the dwelling is rented." So what constitutes primary residence? How, like, is that a length of time?
It's, it's defined. There's in the, let me see if I can get you to that page in the staff report. I had it open, and then I closed it.
Oh, there's a definition, I see.
Yeah, there is a definition of that, and it's where, I think it's where one, you know, resides most of the time. You know, I think that's the language that's in there. And, you know, frankly, we haven't had any, any... We did have enforcement case or, or issue that arose before the ordinance was in effect, I think, where the, I think the, sort of the crux of that issue was that it was an absentee owner. I think it was someone who actually lived overseas, and it was very difficult, actually, for staff to get in contact with the owner. But I don't know that we've had any problems of that sort since then, have we, Bill? I don't know. Bill, are you available to help answer that question?
Right. Since the ordinance has been passed, we have not had a, a code enforcement case that dealt with an absentee owner.
Thank you.
Oh, Commissioner Leek, I saw you had a question, and then we'll go with Commissioner Fisher after, and Commissioner Beckett, I'll get you after Commissioner Fisher. So Commissioner Leek?
Uh, yeah, and this is really for Mr. Youngblood, perhaps. What sort of issues have backup? This last year, we've had COVID, so I wonder how many Airbnb visits there have been as people have not been traveling the way they used to be. Do you see a difference in the number of Airbnb uses this last year over the previous year?
So there is a chart that's, Attachment A, page 2 of 2, to the staff report that shows a monthly scrape, it's called. So we have software that we look at to identify advertisements for short-term rentals in Lake Oswego. And so that's where we get the, the number that you see there. So the same day each month is what those numbers represent. So they've been relatively steady from 31 confirmed rentals up to, I think, 53. What was at the, the height of it? These started in October of 2019, so approximately four months before COVID started. But it's actually, you know, we, we looked, the city considered an ordinance for short-term rentals for a few years, and so we've looked at numbers from various times while, while the ordinance was being considered, and they've really stayed fairly steady.
Have you found, one more question. Have you found that the people advertising are in fact licensed?
So there's another chart that shows the number of short-term rentals that have been identified and confirmed. It's called, meaning that we've matched, been able to match the advertisement to a specific location so that we can tell that it's inside the city limits. A number of business license that's been issued for short-term rentals in the city. And the number of... So then we matched the number of confirmed short-term rentals to the number of business license, okay, that's been issued, if, if you follow. So there's about, about 52%, 53% of the confirmed number of short-term rentals in the city have a business license.
And when someone does not, what happens?
Well, so enforcement for short-term rental is treated the same as other enforcement issues in the city, so it's by complaint. So when we receive a complaint about a short-term rental, we check to see that it has a business license, and that it's complying with the, the standards in the code for short-term rentals. If it does not have a business license, they're required to get a business license or to modify their advertisement so that it's for 31 days or longer, you know, is their term of stay, so that they're no longer considered a short-term rental.
You know?
Thank you.
And one thing, Commissioner Leek, and for others, that might be worth mentioning because the, the data, I think, are, they track along in terms of, you know, number of licenses and the number of confirmed, in terms of trend lines, but they're not apples to apples because you may have, and we found that there are licensed, there are licenses for short-term rentals that are not currently in operation, or we suppose that that's the case because, you know, a license is for a full year, and some people may have taken their listing offline or they're no longer operating, while others, you know, are operating and clearly they don't have a license. It's a, it's really a resource issue, and, you know, it's the same situation for any type of business license. We just don't have the staff to go out and, you know, check every business location on a monthly basis. If we did, we would.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fisher?
Actually, you, Phil and Helen have asked the questions I was going to. Just let me summarize. So I remember when we first passed this thing, there was all kinds of hysteria about how this was going to bring crime to the neighborhood and these transients. We don't know who they are, and there's extra parking. The impression I'm getting is that isn't the case at all. And even the COVID has not produced any significant variations. Is that a fair statement?
I heard you. I was muted. I think, yeah, I heard your question, Commissioner Fisher, and I think that's, I think that's accurate. I think there are some factors that are moderating this. Obviously, people are not, or haven't been traveling as much until recently. Now we're starting to see more, more of that. On the other hand, people are at home, and we know that with, like, tree removal and with other types of code complaints or violations that we hear about, when there are more people at home, there are more eyes on the street. And so, you know, there's a greater likelihood that if, if there is excess noise or a parking concern or something like that, we're more likely to get a call than during non-COVID times. I think that would be fair to say.
Thank you.
Commissioner Beckett?
Yes, I'm pleased that there hasn't been a deluge of complaints about it. On the other hand, we've had the impact of the COVID restrictions that have considerably decreased people's desire to travel and go places short-term. So I'm inclined to think we should let the sunset clause go for another six months. Give it another half year and see how that unfolds as we come off of the COVID restrictions before we let the sunset clause take effect.
Commissioner Beckett, I would ask that, you know, we're not in deliberations now. Thank you for your input, but we'd also like to hear the comments that we have from the folks who wish to give testimony tonight. And then after we get the public comments, we'll move more into the deliberations. But to appreciate the early comments. Commissioners, any other questions, or I would like to open it up for a public comment? Well, I, oh, Vice Chair Pepe, sorry.
I may have missed, not identified this in, in the attachment that you guys provided. Correct me if I'm wrong, there's, is, were we tracking the number of guests, if you will, that were staying at the short-term rentals within Lake Oswego?
No, no, we're not able to track the number of guests. We tracked the number of advertisements, you know, so properties that are advertising for short-term rental in the city and the number of business licenses that were issued for short-term rentals.
Okay. And then in that tracking of advertisements, was it at that point that you were able to identify if they did or did not have a business license? Or was it a wait on a complaint and then find out?
But so monthly, we asked for those numbers from the finance department for the number of business licenses issued for short-term rentals, and just compared those to the number of confirmed advertisements that we received from the software for short-term rentals in the city.
Okay. And then, sorry, going, going back to the data on how many short-term rental guests were staying in short-term rentals in the city, that's data that we can't get from Airbnb or any of the other?
Well, there isn't a policy, there really isn't a policy objective that would tell us to try to go collect that data. It's not, it's not a regulation. When the ordinance was being considered, I remember at the Planning Commission level, there was deliberation and at one point proposal to have restriction, limitations, I think, on the number of nights or maybe the number of guests. Those were all different kind of facets of this that I know the commission had discussed, but there's no limitation on the number of guests other than, you know, what the platform, whether, whether it's Airbnb or, you know, some other platform might...
Right. No, I'm sorry, maybe I, maybe I'm, I'm not phrasing my question right. What I'm wanting to know is based on the number of short-term rental bookings that happened within the city of Lake Oswego, in comparison to the number of complaints that happened, right? And then compare that to the other types of complaints that happen, whether it be tree removal because of storm damage or non-storm damage or other business-related complaints. How does that stack up? I mean, if you don't have any short-term rental guests staying because of COVID, I mean, truly, you shouldn't get any complaints. I mean, truly, you shouldn't get any complaints. But if we were actually getting, and people were being successful in getting forty five percent or sixty five percent occupancy on renting out their room and/or their house, that then definitely changes those numbers or the weight of those numbers. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that does make sense. Unfortunately, we don't have that data. In the testimony that you received, the written testimony and perhaps in the oral testimony you're going to receive tonight, it might be helpful to, you know, that you may learn something from that that we're not able to provide.
Okay.
Commissioners, Commissioner Sumler, and then we'll take this. I'd like to open it up for a public comment. So Commissioner Sumler will take this question, and if we can, let's move into public comment.
Absolutely. Mr. Youngblood, is the scrape able to differentiate between a single bedroom rental versus a whole house? And are you able to kind of parse out that, that data? Is that an option? It'd just be interesting to know what is a, a single bedroom being rented versus entire property? Maybe I missed that in the, the attachment also, but is that?
It's not something we're, we're tracking. Most of the ads do describe, you know, the area that's, that's rentable, you know, for rent well enough for you to, for us to determine whether it's a single room or the entire house. But because there was no limit put on the amount of space that could be rented, it's not something that we've been tracking.
Gotcha. But I mean, is it in the best interest for the city to potentially find that out, you know, versus, I would just wonder? Because it's one thing to have one person, a whole house, and maybe you could have whole blocks rented out for, for guests. You know, there's no limitation on the amount of rentals that the city's able to, to allow, correct?
Yeah, Commissioner Sumler, I think that's, that's a good observation, and it was, it was something that the council considered when they adopted the ordinance and chose to, you know, not really, you know, limit the number of residences or the number of, you know, the number of short term rentals or, or, you know, requiring that only a portion of the residents may be used as a rental. I think that was very intentional, and, and the thought was, we have, we have home occupation standards. They're, they're designed to protect the neighborhood character so that residents can enjoy the, you know, enjoy the peaceful enjoyment of their neighborhood. I think that's what the code says. And so rather than, you know, prescribing standards along the lines of, you know, the number of short term rentals or whole house or part of a house, they chose to rely upon those performance standards in the home occupation code and then see if we would be, you know, receiving complaints or if it would become more of a concern than other types of home businesses, which so far it hasn't. But again, you could look at the timeframe and, and, you know, judge that either way.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fisher, we'll take this as the last question, and then we'll move into public comment. And then if commissioners have more questions after the public comment, we can, we can ask more. So final question for now from Commissioner Fisher.
And does this somehow mesh with HB two oh one, two oh one in the sense that can we count short term rentals as affordable housing or, or anything like that?
Yeah, Commissioner Fisher, I think the short answer is the short term rentals are not housing. They're, they're a commercial use or accessory use within a residence that is commercial. And there is a connection, though, I think it's, it's, it's a good point that there is a connection to the incentives that the city has put in place for affordable housing and for accessory dwelling units in that the fee waivers that are available for someone who wants to create an accessory dwelling unit are not available if they choose to use that accessory dwelling unit as a short term rental. And if they've been granted a fee waiver in the past for having, you know, developed an accessory dwelling unit, and, and they've agreed, you know, not to use it as a short term rental. If they decide later that they want to begin operating a short term rental, they can do so, but they'll, they would have to pay the system development charges that, those become payable at that point. So we have considered the, I guess, the, the impact of short term rentals on housing and relative to the incentives and fee waivers that the city offers for certain types of housing. So I know it wasn't your question, but I wanted to show that we've thought about the, you know, the housing dimension of this.
I'm sure you have. Thank you.
Right, Commissioner, I'd just like to give a reminder that, you know, the scope that we have in front of us tonight is to give recommendations on either removing the sunset clause or to extend and, or the repeal to a later date. So, you know, we're discussing this and asking questions, so please make sure it's relative to that. If there's other concerns or issues that commissioners want to raise related to short term rentals, we could make a quick note, but they would be on a bin list, and that would go to council for review and then possibly a future meeting. So again, the scope tonight is really specifically on either removing the sunset clause or to extend the repeal to a later date. So we'll keep the discussion focused on that. With that, I'd like to open it up for a public comment. I don't know if staff would like to give any opening remarks. I know there are some remarks we'd like to make before we actually vote, but if there's any comments that staff would like to make before we take public comment, allow that opportunity now.
Well, I would just note that I believe you received seven letters from the public, and I believe they were all supportive of removing the sunset, or at least they were commenting that they felt that the short term rental allowance was appropriate and that there is no longer a need to, to have an expiration date on it. So I don't think staff has a reason to, you know, to object to that. I, you know, I think you would want to consider if you were going to extend the sunset or put another deadline out there for the city recommending that to the council, that you'd want to consider, you know, the administrative cost and the overhead that's involved in going through a process like this. So, you know, there is a trade off there and, and, you know, deferring that. That's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Director Segal. Actually, on the public comment, you raise a good point. There was seven letters that were received. Actually, on one of the letters that was received, it appeared that maybe the person commenting was generally saying that they would like short term rentals to continue. It wasn't so much on the specific action of to, you know, remove or to extend the sunset clause. So I thought maybe that one commenter didn't understand what the ask was specific to the sunset clause, but most of the others did. So thank you, staff, for giving the updates, and I'd like to open it up for a public comment. Iris, would you please announce the first person that we'd like to admit for public comment?
Certainly, Jason Murray, I'll move him over.
Hello.
And before he testifies, I'll be timing. You can't see my clocks, I'll interrupt about one minute prior, five minutes.
Okay, I won't come near that. It sounds like, you know, you guys have heard all the arguments. I thank you for your time, appreciate the consideration.
One second, Mr. Murray, before you start, would you like to just state your name and address for the record?
No problem, yeah, my name is Jason Murray. I live at thirteen fifty Ridgecrest Drive in Lake Oswego. I've been a resident of Lake Oswego for eight years, and I'm strongly in favor of removing the sunset clause. I didn't realize that you'd only had seven letters. I wrote a letter to the commission. I'm not sure if all the parties there had gotten to, to read those. So I'll just touch on sort of some high level points of why I think it's important that the clause be removed. I've, I've heard a few concerns this evening around, you know, COVID really affecting travel and, and lack of sort of maybe volume of what would normally be, you know, businesses would, that would be, you know, as a result of a short term rental, and COVID be affecting that or negatively impacting the volume of STRs in the town. And while I agree that travel as a whole is probably down, as someone who's used STRs in the, in the time of COVID, I would say I'd feel more comfortable renting out a house than I would be staying at a hotel during COVID. So again, I don't know what the numbers are and whether that business has been dramatically decreased as a result of COVID, but it's just another thing to consider. I think the bigger picture is this, though, the sunset clause has been in place for two years. Prior to that, there was, I believe, like five or six years of data that Mr. Youngblood shared with both the commission and the, and the, and the, and the, the rest of the panel within the city council that the STRs really have been a non-issue. And I know that Mr. Youngblood has spoken to this or to that on a number of different occasions. And I realize some, some of it comes down to enforcement. He does not have a huge team, but I think more importantly, there, there's just been so few complaints against short term rentals in Lake Oswego, both during the sunset provision and in the, in the years leading up to it. And so I, I think it's time to let it go. We're in a new economy. People, you know, are enjoying their freedom, their flexibility, and, and STRs allow some financial security for folks that are homeowners that allow them to have more flexibility, that allow them to leverage their, their biggest asset as a stream of income. And for some people, that, that's a big deal. It allows me to take my family on, on vacations during the summer. We offset some of that travel cost and, you know, in the past have, have rented out properties to do so. When we're traveling, we use STRs and destinations because we prefer homes to, to hotels and the experience that that provides. And, yeah, I just, you know, in short, I just, I think it's time to let it go. It's, it's, it's a non-issue, and I think there's other, other things that the city needs to be more concerned about than allowing the, the sunset clause to continue. So thank you, appreciate the time.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. We may have questions for the commissioners, commissioners, questions for Mr. Murray. Mr. Murray, I have one. Who would you say was the biggest platform that's used for short term rentals?
You know, I think it's probably Airbnb or VRBO. There's obviously a number of different platforms. I mean, there's a lot of look alikes and competitors, but I think that those are the, probably the most trusted platforms. You know, probably have the most experience in the space. They do a great job of vetting, you know, user base, much like an Uber or other sort of gig economy business platforms. Your customers are screened, they are rated. You, for the most part, know who's going to be coming into your home, you know, when you decide to enter into a short term rental contract. And there's, there's sort of, there's also, you know, they, they provide liability coverage, insurance. There's, there's just, you know, they're, they're probably the two market leaders, I would say. And my experience with both of them have been very positive. I don't use any of the other sort of, you know, challenger brands, if you will.
Thank you, so it sounds like you're saying that Airbnb is the largest platform. Earlier, you mentioned that maybe you weren't familiar with numbers. But in Fortune magazine and the November sixteenth issue, they listed the effect of COVID, and part of the data that was there was that Airbnb's revenues were actually down over three hundred and thirty four million, which was down seventy two percent year over year. They suffered massive losses. The company lost over six hundred and seventy four million, far greater than the sixteen point nine million that it had lost the year earlier. So it seems like the numbers are pretty significant, given that Airbnb is one of the primary platforms. Their actual revenues were off seventy two percent, and their, their, their actual loss was up, you know, from sixteen million to over six hundred and seventy million. So it sounds like there's substantial numbers of, you know, loss there and effect that COVID had. Would you agree with that?
I agree that maybe Airbnb didn't have a great year, but I think the, the stronger data point is that we have six or seven years of data from Bill Youngblood that state that STRs aren't an issue regardless of volume of business in it with STRs in Lake Oswego. And I think that, to me, speaks more volume about, you know, why it's time to let it go than just looking at the COVID year and the, and then the down numbers as, as those, that data indicates.
Commissioner Sumler?
I was wondering, Mr. Murray, do you find it frustrating to see the data that there's potentially half of the residents who rent out STRs are licensed? I'm guessing you're a licensed individual, you followed through with all the steps to be a legitimate renter.
We actually haven't rented out our house since, since the, since the sunset clause was enacted two, almost two years ago. So I do not have a license, but I am a full supporter of it because I've used the services before and I value the services. And I, and I don't want to be restricted about how I use my home as long as I'm compliant with those rules. So if I were to enter into an agreement, I'd get a business license. But yeah, it, I mean, do, are there, you know, there's a lot of rules in our town that aren't necessarily followed, you know, and, you know, we obviously, as, as Mr. Youngblood said, we don't have the resources to enforce all of them. And so much like compliance with other legislation or other rules, it's on, it's on an as needed basis, right? And so it sounds like, from what Mr. Youngblood says, that, that those incidents are, are very low volume. So while I would encourage anyone who is supporting STRs to follow the, the rules, because it does, it, it, it's going to help with revenue for the city. It's going to help that the, the hosts are compliant. And it's just going to make for a more, I think, more transparency with the city and probably more support because you're going to see that there really aren't problems. But, you know, some of that falls on the platforms. The platforms are self policing. You know, if, if you, if you come and, and, you know, request an Uber or, you know, some of the ride sharing service and your driver has two stars, you probably, you're probably not going to take it, right? And the same with, with STRs. You know, most people are looking for hosts who have high ratings, who are compliant, who follow the rules. And, and as these scrapes indicate, there are some people that aren't. So I think maybe that's the question, how do you, how do you encourage those folks to participate more in the structure that the city set up?
Do you think the sunset clause could help guide those individuals into compliance?
That's a good question. I, I would think that maybe just letting people know. I mean, I know, because it's an issue that I've cared about and followed for the last three years, it's developed in the city. But I don't know that all, that, that the, the general public knows about the, the rules. So maybe it's just more of an outward education. I don't know that, that the sunset provision will help with that. Maybe there's another way. I'm not, I'm not sure. That's a good question.
Thank you.
Commissioner Vice Chair Pepe, sorry.
Question, you had indicated that either prior to or when the sunset clause came into effect, you had not been renting out or participated in short term rental. Is that correct?
I've, I've participated in short term rentals, you know, for the twenty four years that I've owned property, some of which were in California, some of which were in Lake Oswego. We traveled a lot more when our kids were younger, so I was more apt to use, use my home as an STR rental in that period. When my kids got older, around two thousand nineteen and started, you know, we started, they had less flexibility in our schedule. I just stopped doing it as much. It wasn't, wasn't a result of the sunset clause being, you know, put in there. Because for me, you know, the, the, the business license, the six percent tax or whatever the taxes, those are, those are small numbers to pay to be a part of this community. And so it's not, it's not that, that's not a deterrent. We just haven't had the time to do it. And as you said, COVID did, did factor in to, you know, travel over the last year. So I would very much welcome any regulation and did, I supported regulation of the process when the city council enacted the sunset clause. There were a lot of people, there were very few people who were for STRs that weren't for regulation. I think the community as a whole welcomes some type of regulation. I just, you know, I think at this point, with the two years of sunset clause and the multiple years leading up to that, there's enough data and evidence to support that the monitoring or those resources may be put to better use elsewhere.
Okay, and to be clear, it was just your home that you had indicated when you said your address at the beginning of your testimony? That, that's the only home that you were participating in short term rentals?
No, no, actually, it was at a different home. I've, I'm only living in this home for a couple of years, so we haven't participated in STRs with this home. I mean, I, I would. Again, it's, it's only primary residence, right? So it's, you know, you've only ran out the home you live in.
Counselor Bambup, I think you're off of mute, and we can actually hear a little bit of noise if you wouldn't mind muting.
Thank you, Jason.
Yeah, thanks, Christian.
Thank you, Counselor Bambup. So I think that was all the questions that I see. Iris, would you like to admit the next?
Thank you.
Person. Thank you, Mr. Murray, for giving your comments tonight.
Yes, appreciate it.
Mark Rockwell.
Good evening, Mr. Rockwell. We saw a picture of your English Bulldog there, beautiful English Bulldog. Would you like to state your name and address for the record and then give us your comments tonight? Mr. Rockwell, if you can hear us, we cannot hear you. Mr. Rockwell, we cannot hear you. We don't see video, but at least the audio we would need to have. Iris, would we like to go to the next person and then we'll come back and give another opportunity, Mr. Rockwell?
Certainly. The next person is Michael Rolus. Rolus, I think. Hold on. Okay.
I'm here. It's Michael Rolus.
Thank you, Mr. Rolus. If you'd like to state your name and address for the record, then please give us your public comments.
My name is Michael Rolus. I'm at 2535 Glenmore Drive. I submitted a statement which I, if you don't mind, if it's appropriate, I'll just read it because I think I hit on all the points that I would like to convey to all of you.
Mr. Rolus, I'd just like to say that that's fine if you'd like to read it, but there is a time limit on the testimony comments. So there's a five minutes per individual applies. Go ahead.
I understand. Thank you. So thank you for the opportunity to provide public testimony on short-term rentals and the extension of ordinance 2815. I may be the one who didn't quite understand the extension, but I think you accurately said that I am in support of the short-term rentals. Just want to throw that out there. I'm a member of the Glenmore neighborhood, a parent of two Hallinan students, and owner of a short-term rental at my primary residence on Glenmore Drive. I am in favor of extending the allowance of short-term rentals as provided by ordinance 2815, if I understood it correctly. My family considers itself blessed to have moved to our beautiful neighborhood after having spent many months in a high-rise apartment during COVID. We are equally blessed to have a detached studio apartment above the garage. This has allowed us to safely host family members and friends for a few weeks out of the year. And I would like to have the flexibility to keep such visitors coming rather than rent out the space long term. But it was otherwise sitting vacant in the meantime. And since I'm a teacher-turned-stay-at-home dad and I haven't acquired the Oregon Teaching Certificate, I applied for the business license to operate the short-term rental and began renting last November. Through the short-term rental, I bring in supplemental income for my family. I enjoy some nominal work managing the place, and I have the flexibility to host family and friends when needed or desired. My girls can see me interacting with guests from a distance and know that when I disappear to the ADU for three hours, I'm cleaning the space and preparing for the next guest. They watch me and appreciate the value and dignity of hospitality and good, honest work. They are always excited seeing the new guests move in. I've talked to neighbors about it, even checked with my closest one to make sure he approves, and all seem very supportive. I'm pretty sure they make a fun game out of counting the different license plates they've seen parked in front of my garage over the past few months. I pay for the business license and I pay taxes on the income that I make from renting. My guests pay a local hospitality tax of roughly 6% of their total booking price, which Airbnb apparently remits to the city of Lake Oswego. Guests enjoy a lovely stay with personal touch and get to see our wonderful community from a locals' perspective. They go out and spend more money at local businesses and return home and tell everyone they know about their wonderful stay at a charming little place in beautiful Lake Oswego. But short-term rentals are much more than a modest revenue stream for me, additional income for local businesses, and tax revenue for the city. They also allow for the personal human connections, albeit distance, that we all crave during COVID times. And I want to give you a sense of those human connections here, and this is really my main point. Since opening up our short-term rental, we have been delighted to host guests from as far off as New York or as close to home as West Lynn. One lady was an Oregon native living in Texas who came to close on a house. Another couple was selling their house in Portland and waiting for renovations to finish at their new home in West Lynn. Several came to tour homes in the area, and my real estate agent was grateful for the new clients. There was also the guest who stayed because his power was still out after the ice storm. And there was the musician recognized by Rolling Stone for one of the 10 best Americana songs, who needed a peaceful respite and inspiration to write his next songs. There was also the medical practitioner doing a rotation at a local hospital, a bartender completing a course at a local brewery, and the mother from Boring, Oregon, just seeking a weekend for herself. And the new parents from Washington, who got a weekend free for a fishing trip, and a couple craving a quiet New Year's transition from a terrible 2020 to a hopeful 2021. And last week, there was the daughter visiting her eight-year-old mother at Mary's Woods for the first time since COVID hit.
Mr. Rolus, you reached your five-minute limit. I'll recognize you for another minute.
Mr. Heepe has one minute left to go.
A one-minute left, sorry.
One minute prior.
Sorry. Okay. Thank you.
So when COVID is a thing of the past, my point is I don't want such connections, you know, fostered by family-run, short-term rentals to also come to an end. I think these rentals are good for my family, they're good for the city, and they're good for the visitors come to Lake Oswego. So I would like to see that the provisions of this ordinance be extended or to allow for short-term rentals to continue. So thank you for allowing me to voice my perspective within the five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rolus, for your comment. Again, tonight, what we're deciding is specifically on the sunset clause, whether to let it expire or to move it to another date. It's not so much to allow or disallow short-term rentals. Commissioners, questions for Mr. Rolus? None? All right. I'd like to move on to our next person who would like to give a public comment. We'd like to come back to Mr. Rockwell. Mr. Rockwell, if you'd like to state your name and address for the record?
Can you hear me this time?
Yeah.
Okay. Mark Rockwell, 13455 Nos Road, Lake Oswego. I'll keep my comments brief, mainly wanting to answer questions that you've had. I anticipated that there would be questions about the volume of short-term rentals during the last couple of years. And so I have numbers from Airbnb. They're only Airbnb, so it doesn't include VRBO or other platforms. But I think you'll be surprised to know that in the last two years, the last 24 months, there have been almost 50,000 guest nights in Lake Oswego. That's five zero 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 zero, 50,000 guest nights. And yet, in that period of time, it's crickets. You wouldn't know anyone was in our town even visiting. That speaks to the quality of our community. It speaks to the quality of our guests, and it speaks to the quality of our hosts. And so I think that we can all take great pride in the fact that we've had almost 50,000 guest nights in the past two years with really nothing of any significance to report. I don't think you could handle or could organize a church bake sale that would have fewer complaints. Comparing 2020 to 2019, the guest nights are down by only 18% in Lake Oswego. In the year 2020, there were 22,000 guest nights. In the year 2019, there were 26,000 guest nights. The reason the guest nights were only off by 18% is the people who came in 2020 actually stayed considerably longer. The average guest stay in 2019 was 5.7 nights, and in 2020, it was 7.6 nights. So the number of guests was down by more than 18%, but the number of guest nights was only down by 18%. That is a staggering number. It represents an estimated contribution to our economy of nearly $7.5 million. This is not insignificant for our community, and it's certainly not insignificant for the hosts. I would strongly urge removing the sunset. It was a provision that was implemented based on concerns that were expressed at the time the ordinance was under consideration. And I think the city got it right. The city put together a very smart and well-drafted ordinance. It requires owners to live in the home. I think that eliminates virtually all of the problems. And the sunset was really to give the community a two-year test period. And I would have to say that if you were judging it by virtually any standard, the city, the guests, and the hosts all got As. That's all I have to say.
Well, thank you, Mr. Rockwell. Commissioners, questions? Commissioner Fisher?
Just a technical one. When you say 20,000 guest nights, so a family of four would be four guest nights?
Well, if you had four guests and they stayed four nights, that would be 16 guest nights.
Thank you.
Mr. Rockwell, this data that you're referring to is publicly available?
It's not publicly available. I mean, it's not published, but I specifically asked Airbnb to provide it to me. It's the same kind of information they provided prior to the ordinance, because I think it was really, it is important to know how many people are coming into our community. I will tell you quite honestly, I was amazed when I first got statistics five, six years ago. If someone had asked me how many people had visited Lake Oswego for STRs, I would have estimated a fraction of that because they're just so, they're just so non-events. And so when Airbnb provided me the guest nights and the number of nights they stay, I mean, honestly, since STR started back in about 2011, there have been probably close to a quarter million guest nights in Lake Oswego. I was shocked when I first read the numbers, and that's because they're just off the radar. People come here, like at our home, most of our guests are between 55 and 65. They're grandparents. They come to see their family. They stay for a week and a half or two weeks, and they look just like the rest of us. They're responsible, credible, thoughtful individuals, and they look just like my in-laws.
You, Mr. Rockwell, you may remember when the commission took hearings on the Airbnb, part of what we did ask for was, you know, maybe the ability to ask Airbnb to share the data with the city so that we could look at that. And other cities had did similar things. I know that was part of the record and part of the testimony, specifically New York and other places, and Airbnb refused to provide that data. But I think what you're saying is, based on this private data you received from Airbnb, it goes against what we've heard in some of their public comments, and specifically some of their public records, such as their IPOs. And the IPO is they, Airbnb communicated that they had to do cost-cutting measures to address the 219.3 million third-quarter profit that they were down. They had to do things like lay off staff. They had to cut bonuses. They reduced the executive salaries for six months. They suspended all new office construction. But what you're saying is these national trends didn't really apply to Lake Oswego. We were different.
Well, that's exactly right. And that is actually the argument we made when we were asking for STRs to be approved. What we said was, and I think it's proven to be true, Lake Oswego is not a tourist community. People are not coming here and staying in STRs for the most part because they're just travelers wanting to check out Lake Oswego. We have had dozens of people stay in our home, and they fall into about three or four categories. They're either people who have been displaced out of their own home, live in Lake Oswego, but their home has either had a water pipe break or they've had some kind of remodeling that they needed to do, and so they moved out of their home temporarily, and they need a short-term rental. That's one type. The majority of people who stay in our STR are grandparents, frankly, who come here to see their kids. And they'll come for two weeks at a time, and as they will have more than once said, "Our kids don't have a place for us to stay, but even if they did, we don't want to stay there. We want our own privacy. They need their own privacy, and we need a place to stay." And those have, we've had many, many grandparents come stay for a week, two weeks, three weeks. And I would tell you, 99% of our guests have some strong connection to Lake Oswego. They're either residents here, they're moving here, they have family here, they've lived here in the past, and they're coming back to see friends. This is not a tourist attraction.
So, Mr. Rockwell, there's maybe one question. You mentioned that a lot of your customers, a lot of the Airbnb people coming to Lake Oswego are the grandparents, some of the elders. Those were some of the, you know, most impacted kind of age groups by the COVID pandemic. And there's another report in Forbes. This was in their 2020 June 9th issue that stated 47% of the hosts don't feel safe renting to the guests, while 70% of the guests are fearful fearful to stay at an Airbnb. 64% of the guests had canceled or planned to cancel their Airbnb booking. But in Lake Oswego, even though the guests that we're seeing are the more the elderly, the grandparents, that, again, this bucks the trend of kind of what was publicly reported here, that people weren't fearful of the COVID and that the numbers, again, stayed high despite kind of what your observations have been, that they were grandparents mostly.
Well, I certainly wouldn't say that there haven't been people that, rephrase that, I'm sure there are people that didn't travel in 2020 that otherwise would have. But I can also tell you, there were a lot of people who came to our home who felt very safe here. They knew it was going to be spotlessly clean. We even had one couple come in and quarantined for two weeks before they went to see, they were from Canada, Vancouver, British Columbia. They came and stayed in our Airbnb for two weeks and quarantined before they went to see his mother. So we've had people show extreme care and caution, but I think they felt very safe knowing that our home was not being occupied by a lot of people and that there was significant time between guests, so any COVID would have elapsed.
Sure. Vice Chair Pape?
Out of curiosity, would you say that you saw an increase or a decrease or no change with the current ordinance that's been in place that we're talking about tonight? As far as bookings for your rental?
I think it's been pretty steady. You know, it varies from year to year. I mean, we've had a couple of times prior to the ordinance where we had people come and stay for, we'd, once we were aware that was illegal in Lake Oswego. Because I was so very active in short-term rentals, I made a commitment to myself and everyone. I wasn't going to violate the city's ordinance. So we only went with longer-term rentals. We had people that would come and stay for a month or two. But since the ordinance has been adopted, I think it's been pretty steady during 2019 and 2020, although, you know, honestly, there weren't that many months after the ordinance was adopted before COVID hit. But we're seeing pretty steady. You know, we have people come for, I would say our apartments probably rented close to 50% of the time, and 50% of the time it's not.
And prior to you realizing that it wasn't legal, was it still at about 50%?
Yeah, I think that's fair to say. I honestly can't give you precise. But I mean, I can't tell you that over the last several years, there's been any dramatic up or down. And I do think, though, that initially, during the first couple, three months of COVID, when everybody was in an absolute lockdown mode, we didn't see many guests. But once people started to get a sense as to what this was all about and started to stick their head above the parapet, then we've had a fair number of guests on a fairly regular basis.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Lee? Commissioner Lee? Commissioner Lee, yeah, go ahead.
I'm going to try to connect the dots here with this question. So if there are 22,000 night stays in Lake Oswego in the last year, and they're going a majority through Airbnb, but Mr. Youngblood said that only 50% of the Airbnb owners are licensed. Does that mean the city is not collecting the tax that is owed them if they're not licensed?
It was my impression, and I'm not an authority on this, but I believe Airbnb collects the tax. It is, it isn't, so I don't think there's, again, I'm not an expert on this, but I don't think there would be any connection between whether...
Yeah, it doesn't, they're a non sequitur. They're two separate things. Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions? Maybe one final question, Mr. Rockwell. We talked a little bit about the history and up to this point, but as we're looking at the sunset clause and we're looking at potentially, you know, what's going to be the change in demand and the change of short-term rentals? I assume you're familiar with VRBO President Jeff Hurst. This is not Airbnb, but VRBO. Are you familiar with Jeff Hurst?
I have no personal knowledge of him, no.
He's the actual president of VRBO. Anyway, I was wondering if maybe you could comment his public comments. This was given on March 28th of 2021, where he said that we could be, and this is a quote, where he says, "We could be looking for, at a real boom for leisure travel. Resurgence in vacations could lift all boats in the sector." And so he's really expecting kind of a surge in the bookings as we go forward. I was just wondering if you had heard that, which probably you haven't. But, you know, if we're forward-looking, would that make sense that we do expect the bookings to go up?
Well, it wouldn't surprise me if the bookings do go up if the economy in general stays positive and people are no longer as apprehensive about COVID. With, in the context of the sunset provision, however, I think that it's, it makes sense to do away with it because it was really implemented with the thought that it was to give the city the opportunity to apply a test. And I think that they, it's very clear from the lack of complaints and yet from the fairly robust number of guests that we've had given despite COVID, that we as a community have been very successful. And one of the drawbacks of a sunset provision is it, it makes it very difficult to then implement long-term programs, working with the Chamber of Commerce and the Tourism Board, to start to create, how can the STRs become a vibrant part of our community if it's still on temporary status? And I don't think there's any reason or justification to keep something that has been so glowingly successful on a temporary status. That just, I don't think that makes, there's no justification for it.
Well, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Rockwell? Commissioner Fisher?
I don't know how, I've never done an Airbnb. Does Airbnb collect the tax and then send it to the city?
Yes, it does.
So, so in theory, we should have, you had said something about $7.5 million contributing to the community.
Yeah. So that, that is based, I'm sorry, I cut you off. I apologize.
So in theory, the city should have seen like 42,000 in revenue? Is that, is that checkable or?
When I say $7.5 million, Commissioner Fisher, it would be in the context of it's estimated that for every guest night, each guest spends approximately $150 in our community. That's not taxes, but that means restaurants, lodging, gasoline, groceries. So when you take 22,000 guest nights and you multiply it times $150 a day, that is a staggering number.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions? Well, thank you very much, Mr. Rockwell, for giving a public comment tonight. Appreciate it.
And thank you for the opportunity.
Iris, we'd like to admit the next person.
Ryan Kovak.
Good evening, Mr. Kovak. We can see that you've joined. If you'd like to unmute and then give us your name and address for the record. And then there is a five-minute limit tonight on public comment, but go ahead.
I'd first like to make sure that I am unmuted. Is that correct?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, and I'm trying to start video. If I could, I would like to be on video. Are you able to see me?
No, there's no video.
Okay, unfortunately, due to my time constraint, I will not take any more time of that. I'll just go with the audio at this point. So, thank you for hearing me. My name is Ryan Kovak, owner of 908 Lakefront Road, Lake Oswego, Oregon, 97034. As I have heard the previous speakers, I would first like to open up by mentioning that my specific STR has been booked solid through the COVID crisis. Solid. Tonight, actually, the, tonight being the first night in the last six months, I think, that I actually do not have a guest. My last guest checked out this morning. It was a couple that were here in Lake Oswego for a virtual web seminar that was supposed to happen in the Portland area. But due to COVID, you know, it was, it was turned into like a virtual seminar. And so they sought out a nice, clean, hospitable area where they could, you know, get involved with their, their, their seminar that they were virtually attending via my area and my listing. And they were so happy with it that it turned into what I think will be a lifelong friendship between me and these folks. What I would like to point out at this point is that that guest that just had moved out this morning has already gone ahead and given me my review for being a host. And this is something that happens during all stays. I'm a super host, and that, that takes a lot to achieve. Super host means that you have achieved over 90% of your rankings being five-star or above. And five-star is the best that you can get. So that means quite a lot for me. I'm very proud of the fact that I'm a super host and ambassador of Lake Oswego and, and that I, that I represent Lake Oswego very well. And so these, these, these two individuals gave me five-star ratings across the board for the last couple of days that they were here. The previous guest that I had gave me none, none more or less than also spectacular reviews. If I may go back just a bit, and I know you can't see me, but I'm just going to give a brief synopsis of how busy I've been during COVID. And this is, this would be in, in reference to some of the commissioners' thoughts that maybe COVID is not a good timeframe for us to look at because it might not be as, as, as robust as what it has been before. But in my, in my, my situation, in my owner-occupied residence, it, I have not seen a slowdown in business whatsoever. So I've got guests that, you know, checked out today that gave me five-star reviews. I've got a guest that checked out January of 2021. Ryan was such a great host. Sleep was great on the bed. The location in Lake Oswego was great. And walking our dog around George Rogers Park around the corner was excellent. The room and living space was secluded and quiet. A great place for us to see and have our vacation. December 2020, I had the best stay and best experience I've ever had with Airbnb. Everything was clean. He was willing to help with everything. And all in all, I had an awesome time at Ryan's house. November 2020, Ryan is a nice guy and easy to talk to. I felt as though Ryan was my new roommate. He checked me in with appropriate, and I'm sorry that they might have made a typo, but appropriate, and asked if I needed anything. I would highly recommend staying in Lake Oswego with Ryan. November 2020, Ryan's a cool dude. We loved him. We, we felt right home the moment we got into his driveway. I'll stop that even though I've got a number of other references towards some of those that have had good experiences with Airbnb and in our lovely city of Lake Oswego. Examples also include a neighbor, my next-door neighbor, Jean Kedling, who often uses my Airbnb listing to house her daughter and her husband when they're in town. The reason being is because she doesn't have an extra bedroom. And so she lives right next door to me, so it's perfect for her. I have other friends, family that are on the same street. Obviously, I'm always booked with Airbnb even through, even through COVID. And, and I've, I've not seen any, any problems. And this is because I don't allow parties. I don't allow kind of the crazies that you might hear of or that might have been heard of before, almost rumored of. I really haven't met any of them myself. I have a strict 10 o'clock quiet time at my house. And, and this is, this is what I, this is what I deal with as far as, to my end. And just in conclusion, I really appreciate hearing my, my testimony. It's, it's a means for me to be able to support myself in Lake Oswego and be...
Mr. Kovak, time has expired.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Commissioners, questions for Mr. Kovak? I see none. Thank you for your testimony tonight, Mr. Kovak, your comments. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Iris, we'd like to call the next person.
That's all. That's everybody.
Oh, that was it?
Mm-hmm.
All right. So since we do not have anyone else who would like to make public comment, I'd like to close the discussion and the public comment period and then move back to discussion with the commissioners. Commissioners, are there any final questions that we'd like to ask to staff? Commissioner Lee?
If we're bringing in, if we're bringing in more revenue or, or some revenue from the, from the short-term rentals in Lake Oswego, but only 50% of the people who are participating are licensed, how much are the licensing fees? And couldn't we be more proactive in getting everybody on board with that?
Excuse me, a point of order. Commissioner Lee, is this, you think this is relative to the sunset clause that we're deciding tonight? Or is this a comment that we should be bidding and giving feedback to council that maybe we want to look at, you know, in the future?
I guess it's the latter.
Okay, I'd like to...
Which is, it's not germane to our discussion.
Sure. But staff, any comments?
I think it's, yeah, it's a comment that you'd want to convey onto the council. It's, you know, it's an administrative ask, I guess, that you'd be asking the council or the city manager, you know, through the council to look at business license collections. It's, it's not, this is not unique to short-term rentals, believe me. You know, we've, we have business licenses, over 2,000 business licenses in the city. And, and there's, well, you know, there's always a, I guess, an enforcement or a collection concern there.
Mr. Chair, I guess I would also add that, of course, the planning commission's focus is on the land use aspects of the, of the practice. The planning commission does not oversee the business license administration program. Having said that, as Mr. Segal indicates, of course, the planning commission won't say anything to the council or certain...
Sure, thank you, City Attorney Boone. Maybe one question I had to staff is, you know, part of the concerns we heard with respect to if we'd extend the sunset clause was that there is a cost. It doesn't come from free. There's some administrative cost. Can staff quantify that? I mean, can you give any type of cost that we've occurred, you know, for the previous, you know, year? So that we have some understanding of maybe what the return would be on, given that we have a fixed cost at, you know, administrating? And should we leave the sunset clause in place?
Chair, heap, are you asking what the cost would be if, if you were to extend the sunset? In other words...
Yes, to get some idea how significant it is. Because that seemed like a real concern to say that, you know, the, one of the disadvantages if we'd extend it would be that there's, you know, a city staff expense in order to keep the sunset clause in. So, so yes, I'm just trying, if we can quantify or have a better understanding of what, how much of a cost is that?
Yeah, I think there's, well, there's a financial cost that, you know, we could quantify. I think there's also an opportunity cost because, you know, this is of course taking up time on your docket. And over the next six months, you're going to have a lot of work to do with House Bill 2001, you know, among other things. So there's, you know, potentially an opportunity cost if, you know, if you were to recommend to the council that this comes back in six months, I would say there's probably a workload issue there for the commission and staff, given the other, you know, council goals and priorities that you're working on. You know, if you were to put it out further in the future, you know, it would be prioritized along with other work and goals. But I think there would be more of an opportunity to see this come back. If, you know, if it were a year out or two years out. On the other hand, there is a fixed cost that's, you know, associated with staff time to prepare, you know, for a discussion like this. If there were no other business items on your agenda, there would be, you know, a cost associated with having the meeting recorded and broadcast. And, you know, the, the crew that supports that. So, you know, I, I couldn't quantify it for you on the spot, but you can begin to, you know, put together the scope and think about the, the labor that's involved in putting on a meeting like this. You know, on the other hand, you have other business on your agenda this evening. So, you know, there's already a fixed cost that's going into that. So, you know, without belaboring it, I think...
Great, thank you.
Yeah, the costs will be spread out if you put it out further in the future. On the other hand, it's just going to come back at some point. Yeah.
I think so. Commissioners, would the commission be interested in extending a motion to either remove the sunset clause or a motion to extend the repeal to a later date? Is there any such motion? But before we do that, let me say that maybe Deputy City Attorney Boone, this may be a good opportunity to give some disclosures here. Would that be correct? Or is it, should we wait for the vote?
That's correct. Since this is, I mean, it is a matter, sorry. The question is whether the commissioners need to declare a financial conflict of interest considering this matter.
Commissioners? I was going to ask the commissioners if there's any financial conflicts they'd like to declare. I think in our previous testimony, I had declared that I do have financial interest in the Marriott Corporation and also the Marriott Vacation Club International, who operate, you know, hotels and also timeshares. But I don't feel like I have any real financial conflict from that. Any other conflicts that anyone would like to declare? None? All right. So then I'd like to come back. Yeah, go ahead.
Well, let me, I'm sorry, let me just, there is an exception. I mean, there's, you know, basically a limitation. If you have a very small interest in a publicly held stock, then that would be exempt from the financial interest. And can you, you like have one timeshare in a massive operation that they are?
I think I have one, two, three, four. I have two deeded interests in timeshares, plus I have a trust interest in two others. Relatively small, plus I own drug stock.
All right. Why don't you go ahead and discuss? And I'm going to, I'll find the text on that. Just to make sure you don't have a problem.
Sure. Vice Chair Pepe?
Based on the testimony that we heard, it doesn't seem like the sunset clause had any negative impact on any of the short-term rental folks that provided testimony tonight.
Right, based on what I've heard tonight, I think we should just let the sunset clause take effect.
What do you mean by take effect? Do you like to make a motion, Commissioners, and then we can have discussion on the motion?
Chair Heap, before you, before anyone makes a motion, I just wanted to make sure everyone understands that allowing the sunset clause to remain means that the ordinance would expire on July 16th. So doing, doing nothing means that the ordinance ends. Doing something is, which is up to you, of course, would mean either extending that data further out in the future or removing it so that this question doesn't come back to you.
Yeah, Director Segal, would you agree that it'd be okay if Commissioners were to make a motion to follow the language that was in the agenda? Either a motion to remove the sunset clause or a motion to extend the repeal to a later date? That sounds like, so Vice Chair Pepe?
Sorry, I was just wondering if I could finish my thought.
Sure.
Based on the testimony that we heard tonight, I don't think that, that having the sunset clause in place negatively impacted any of the short-term rental operators. That being the case, my recommendation is that we extend the sunset clause for at least another 12 months. Per Director Segal's comments, the further out that we push this, the less financial impact that we'll see right away. And we can, I think, gather a little bit more data and info redundant for short-term rentals going forward, rather than just completely lifting the veil completely at this point.
Well, thank you, Vice Chair Pepe. With that, I'd like to make a motion that the plan commission extend the repeal to one year later date from its expiration. Second, there's a motion again to extend the repeal to a date of one year later than when it currently expires. There's a second, I'd like to open it up for discussion on the motion.
And that would be July 16th, 2022.
Thank you, Director Segal. So discussion on the motion, Commissioners, would you like to discuss? Commissioner Stewart?
Yes, so I, from what I've heard tonight, I, I don't believe that, well, let me, let me just, let me just follow a different line of thought. So I'm not going to vote for the motion and, and I think that the, the clause should be, the sunset clause should be repealed or, I'm, I don't know what the language is, but I don't think it should be extended. The reason for that is I think it's been demonstrated over the past two years that there's not really been any sort of adverse issues with short-term rentals. I think that the presence of COVID, it sounds like, has not really affected rentals in the city specifically. I know that, I know that there's statistics from Forbes or whatever saying that there's a drop in, you know, 72% or whatever in use of Airbnb, but if you look at hotel uses during this time, it's been pretty consistent, 75 to 80% of a decline. And and I, and I think, I think I, I believe that that leisure travel, you know, people aren't traveling to Lake Oswego to go to the beach or to go to Six Flags or something like that. So I think this sudden spike that we're all expecting in leisure travel is not going to create a spike in the use of short-term rentals in the city. So I, I just, I, I think that the two-year sunset clause has done its job. To me, it's concluded that that short-term rentals can be successful and I don't think it needs to be extended.
Thank you, Commissioner Stewart. I saw Commissioner Fisher next and I'll come and get you after that, Commissioner Beckett. Commissioner Fisher?
Just a question, if we vote to do what Commissioner Stewart suggests and we do start seeing a problem, is it possible to reopen the issue or is it, once we voted on it, it's a done deal?
You would be making a recommendation to city council and if council agree, if, if the motion succeeds and council agrees and, you know, and extends it, then you've got that milestone out there. If on the other hand, you, you know, you choose to remove the sunset and the council agrees or the council decides to remove it of their own accord, they always have the opportunity to revisit the issue. You know, by a motion by, at council with a majority vote could call that back up and, you know, direct the, either direct the planning commission to, you know, review the ordinance, review the land use ordinance, or the council could you know, put, put some other, adopt an ordinance that puts a sunset date on, on short-term rentals again. So I think that they always have that authority to do that, either by referring it to the commission for land use matters or by taking it up and putting a sunset clause back in, I think, unless I'm mistaken of, and they have that ability.
I, I agree with you. It's a business license and the person has to have a right to operate from year to year. And so if the council decided that we're not going to have those businesses in Lake Oswego due to public health safety, et cetera, then they would be basically out after the year.
Okay.
Commissioner Beckett, I'd like to recognize you next and I, Vice Chair Pepe will come to you after that. Commissioner Beckett, go ahead.
Well, based on what I've heard tonight, I do not want to extend the sunset clause. I want to let it take the play, take effect, which would be in July of this year. So I would vote against this motion, which would extend the sunset clause.
Thank you, Commissioner Beckett. Commissioner Pepe?
I would definitely agree with Commissioner Stewart and that was, there was a lot of discussion around this when we were originally discussing and voting on this, that it's not like Disneyland is 25 miles away and this is a massive destination spot. So I don't think we'll see that, a massive spike where other cities will. That being said, and it's, this might not be the fairest of comparisons. It's always easier to open Pandora's box than it is to put a lid back on Pandora's box. And again, it's not necessarily the most fair comparison here. But if there are issues down the road, and I think extending it one more year, again, there shouldn't be any negative impact to any of the short-term rental operators who provided testimony tonight and others who didn't by extending it one more year. I think it should give us a better, truer experience. Hopefully, God willing, the pandemic will be in our rearview mirror here soon and we'll get closer to a normal lifestyle that we all experienced prior to COVID. But I think allowing it at least one more year for the city to get an understanding and residents to have an understanding of short-term rentals, again, opening Pandora's box is a little bit easier than putting the lid back on it. And I am in favor of short-term rentals, but I think we need to give it a little bit more time in a, in a more realistic environment than what we had over the last two years with 50% of that in a pandemic situation.
Commissioners, any other comments? I guess I'd like to just give my comments. I agree with Vice Chair Pepe's comments. I also agree with some of the earlier comments I think Commissioner Leek made where we're asking, is it concerning that, you know, there may be discrepancy in the number of short-term rentals we have versus, you know, the number of licenses that we're seeing? And, you know, are, is the short-term rentals really following the rules that we set out? You know, for some of that data that we looked at earlier, I have some real concerns with that. And to, you know, remove the sunset clause now, you know, I think it's just too early, just based on the impact of the COVID and plus some of the data that we're seeing with maybe the rules not being followed is concerning. And so I would be in favor of extending, in favor of the motion, in favor of extending the sunset clause for one more year. So I think we're ready for a vote. Before I do that, I'd like to give an opportunity for staff to make any final questions or disclaimer questions.
I just wanted to follow, I'm, I'm sorry. I wanted to follow up on the financial conflict of interest question.
Sure, Deputy City Attorney.
The question is whether you hold $100,000 or more in stock or other form of equity interest in the publicly held corporation Marriott?
Yeah, I do not.
Thank you. You do not have a financial conflict of interest. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Segal, you had a?
Well, thank you for the opportunity, Chair. We've concluded our report.
Oh, thank you. So I'd like to call for a vote on the motion. Again, this is a motion to make a recommendation to council to extend the sunset clause by one more year. Iris, would you please call the roll?
Beckett?
No.
Fisher?
Yes.
Heap?
Yes.
Leek?
Yes.
Pepe?
Yes.
Semler?
No.
Stewart?
No.
I believe the motion passes four to three. Is that correct, Iris?
That's correct.
So thank you, everyone. And thanks to everyone who gave a testimony and comment tonight. Really appreciate it. Thank you. So we'd like to move on to the next agenda item. This is our work session, item eight dot one on the agenda, House bills 2001 and 2003. This is work session number three, PP 19 dash 0008. Public comments are accepted. Again, five minutes per individual applies. Iris, was there any one who identified that they would like to make public comment tonight for House bills 2001 and 2003?
No.
So we don't have any, I'll, I'll come back and ask that before we close off the public comment period. But tonight, the planning commission will receive a presentation from city engineer Erica Rooney on infrastructure considerations related to middle housing and will provide input on whether to pursue an infrastructure-based time extension request for middle housing implementation. So I'd like to turn it over to staff for an introduction.
Yeah, Chair Heap, this is Scott Segal. I just, I wanted to hand it over to Eric Olson and Erica will be joining. Erica Rooney will be joining him. So I think Eric's going to lead us off. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Heap, and good evening, Commissioners. I have a few brief slides for you, so I'm going to go ahead and share my screen really quick. Slide mode, all right. So again, good evening, everyone. One of the topics that we've discussed in previous meetings, earlier this spring, early March, were a few, you know, ideas that the planning commission had for presentations related to middle housing and the implementation of House Bill 2001. So one of those topics that the commission had identified was infrastructure planning or middle housing. So today, we're really here to consider how the infrastructure necessary to serve middle housing would be provided, you know, really looking at that from the perspective of the city engineering department. So as Chair Heap mentioned, we have city engineer Erica Rooney with us here today to give a brief presentation on the engineering department's involvement with typical development applicants and sort of look at how they consider the infrastructure that is needed for a particular development. She'll also sort of give us a summary of how that process would apply to middle housing. I will also provide our recommendation on whether the city should request a delay in middle housing implementation on the basis of deficient infrastructure. So again, before I hand it over to Erica, I just wanted to sort of go over a few of, or really a review of some of the basic concepts in the rulemaking passed by DLC related to infrastructure and infrastructure planning. So sufficient infrastructure is defined in the rulemaking, the sort of organ, the ORS legislature, the, the rulemaking that was passed rather by the state. And essentially it means that certain level of services must be provided to triplexes, quadplexes, townhouses or cottage clusters. It's really defined as a connection to a public sewer system capable of meeting established service levels, a connection to a public water system capable of meeting established service levels, access via public or private streets, meaning adopted emergency vehicle access standards to a city's public street system and storm drain, storm drainage facilities capable of meeting established service levels for storm drainage. So just a quick note on the definition of sufficient here, you know, it's sort of different than the definition that would be used for the infrastructure-based time extension request process. So that's sort of defined as deficient infrastructure. So just to note that even though an area might be determined to have, you know, not have sufficient infrastructure, that, that doesn't necessarily mean that it would meet the city's or the state rather's definition of deficient infrastructure, where you could request an extension for middle housing. So the DLC rules are really structured such that cities must treat middle housing similar to other forms of development in terms of ensuring that the infrastructure is available or can be available to serve, to serve the demand can be made available. So just like any other type of urban development, the state expects cities to work with developers of proposed quadplex, townhouse, triplex and cottage cluster developments to remedy infrastructure constraints as they arise. So that may mean that cities are allowed to require developers of middle housing to provide reasonable and proportionate mitigation of localized infrastructure constraints, just like would be required for any other development proposal. The rules really don't, however, allow cities to categorically remove infrastructure constraint lands from the areas where middle housing would be allowed. And so it doesn't allow the removal of certain areas based on those constraints, you know, sort of not having sufficient infrastructure, though there is, you know, an avenue through the infrastructure-based time extension request process. So given really that the state, you know, kind of mandates that cities work with developers to provide this sufficient infrastructure for, for middle housing, there's, you know, is, our analysis really is that there'd be less of a need for the city to plan capital projects to accommodate specific middle housing developments. So, you know, middle housing developments are not really, on the other hand, so that, you know, they're not really likely to solve infrastructure deficiencies that are, you know, affecting the larger area such as a lack of required public street connections. So just a quick note on that. So as part of the rulemaking process for House Bill 2001, the Land Conservation and Development Commission, or LCPC, adopted a process, really that was prescribed by House Bill 2001. And they're referring to the process as IBTR or the infrastructure-based time extension request. I'll just, for the sake of brevity, refer to it as IBTR from here on out. Essentially jurisdictions designated as large cities by House Bill 2001, which includes Lake Oswego, would need to submit IBTR applications to the state no later than June 30th, 2021, so of this year. So we really just wanted to check, check in with you on a decision related to, you know, potential pursuit of an IBTR application. So as we've discussed previously, you know, the development and redevelopment assumptions provided by the state for these types of requests are fairly limiting. You know, they really only allow jurisdictions to assume that a relatively small fraction of middle housing would be developed as a result of adopting middle housing regulations. So that the rates are really 1% for infill or redevelopment and 3% for greenfield development. And we really don't have much greenfield development or greenfield areas within the city that would be potential development sites. So, you know, another thing to note is that this would be, as calculated over the course of 20 years, so you really look at that 1% or 3% growth rate the state would prescribe. You calculate that over 20 years, but really you have to prorate that, I suppose, to 2023. So you really have a year and a half to of that 20 years sort of horizon for which to sort of look at the potential impact. So it's really very limited in terms of what you could expect to occur as a result of middle housing implementation. So really that, sort of the implications of that is that IBTR would only be really approved in very isolated areas where they have either existing or looming service capacity issues already. So just to note, you know, they're not, although the state does use these sort of assumptions for their own IBTR process, it doesn't necessarily preclude, preclude this city from using other types of assumptions for our own sort of infrastructure master planning needs. So as I've pointed out before, IBTR applications have to include quite a bit, you know, there's quite a bit required for a city to sort of show that there would be a deficient infrastructure in a particular area. You have to submit a timeline in which the city would remedy the deficient infrastructure plans or to allow middle housing in other areas of the city in an analysis plans or to allow middle housing in other areas of the city, and analysis of how that extension could impact opportunities for people who experience a disproportionate housing need. And there's some other sort of findings that you'd have to make as well for this type of application. And so just really to point out that this applying for an IBTR really is signing up for the city to commit to addressing a certain infrastructure constraint within a set period of time. So, you know, in some ways that may, you know, require, you know, an actual investment in the infrastructure in the city. It could be somewhat of a commitment to that. But it is, you know, at minimum, a commitment to infrastructure planning and your sort of costs related to that. So, you know, I think generally staff just wanted to note that, that really pursuing this IBTR application, we see that as something that could limit our flexibility to pursue independent infrastructure planning efforts because the parameters really could not be made more specific or contextualized to Lake Oswego. We think that also, you know, in terms of the length of the extension, you know, we're looking at something, you know, between five and ten years at max. You know, I think there's ways to sort of continue to, you know, go back and request an extension if there's some type of issue, but ultimately, it's not, you know, really delaying the issue by, you know, a significant period of time. So, you know, ultimately, we'll still have to deal with this issue eventually. And sort of, you know, by signing up to IBTR, we're kind of agreeing to, you know, play within this prescribed set of rules defined by the state. So that's kind of, you know, a lot of the reasons why we would not recommend that we would pursue an IBTR application, you know, prior to that June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one deadline. So with that, I'll go ahead and hand it over to Erica Rooney, City Engineer, to talk a little bit more about infrastructure and middle housing from the Engineering Department's perspective.
Eric, can we take any questions before we turn it over? I had one question was, can you explain, I'm not following the comments there on the development assumptions, one percent for infill and three percent for greenfield development. What does that really mean? I didn't understand that.
So infill and redevelopment is really looking at areas where there could be a potential demolition of existing structure. It's not necessarily a vacant property. Looking at greenfield development are only really looking at lots that are vacant currently that could be developed without a demolition.
But what are we assuming? Is, I mean, does this mean that we're assuming in Lake Oswego, there could only be a one percent type of applicability for the middle housing for infill and that three percent would be greenfield? And that's what I'm not following exactly what these percentages are relating to.
So these percentages are relating to the assumptions that the city can make in terms of how much additional housing and specifically middle housing would be provided upon implementation of a particular, you know, the implementing sort of code for middle housing. So essentially, in order to be granted an extension for this IBTR process, you have to show that you are going to be significantly deficient, either currently or that you're going to be significantly deficient by the end of twenty twenty-three. So in order to sort of show, you know, if you're not currently significantly deficient, you'd have to show that, you know, you have certain amount of lots that will redevelop in terms of infill sites or demolitions would occur and certain amount of lots that would develop, you know, in vacant sites and sort of look at that small percentage of, you know, housing that you could expect based on these rates really prescribed by the state.
All right, thank you.
Just to put that in real numbers, if the city approves between seventy and a hundred new single-family homes in a year, which is about what we've been trending, and we can only assume that one percent of those lots would have middle housing on it instead of single-family housing, you're talking about one, one quadplex a year for two years. So we're not going to see a big infrastructure impact from that. I think that's the takeaway on this.
Thank you.
And Chair, if I may, just another quick note that that three percent redevelopment assumption for greenfield sites is kind of, that three percent number is something that we use for metro sort of planning purposes related to the housing needs analysis and will sort of apply also to housing production strategies pursuant to House Bill two thousand three. So the state prescribes these growth rates for different sort of purposes, but, you know, it is relatively consistent in that capacity.
Thank you.
And I guess, you know, if there are no further questions, then I'll officially formally hand it over to City Engineer Erica Rooney.
Thank you, Eric. Good evening, Commissioners. As mentioned, I'm Erica Rooney. I'm the City Engineer. And what I wanted to share with you a little bit this evening is actually what, what is engineering's role in the review of land use and in particular with single-family residents? And, and of course, this, this new middle housing. So just, I'm going to provide a little bit of overview of what we do when we're in that review process. So give me just a second. I want to share a few slides. Okay, so a couple of things that'll overlap with what Eric had said earlier. So we'll start with this, which is the engineering role in development. So again, we have staff who do review the land use applications for the impact on public infrastructure. And that's to assure that our current and planned infrastructure improvements can accommodate the proposed development. We use infrastructure master plans are a subset of the overall comprehensive plan and are intended to guide our decision-making as development and redevelopment occurs. So then what we do is we condition properties for improvements such as frontage or roadway improvements and connections to existing systems, water, wastewater, that sort of thing. But I will say that, you know, a single-family residence does not have very many conditions of approval. It's pretty much, you know, they're hooking up to the systems that are already there or they're putting in a driveway. But there's rarely does a single-family home have to put in new roadway improvements. We could talk about that a little bit later if we need to. But what we do is, like I said, we have master plans that help guide us. And in fact, we have four major documents that guide our conditions of four or five, excuse me, and they are these infrastructure system plans. All these plans look at the existing and future infrastructure to accomplish current and proposed development within the defined urban services boundary, not just where the city is today, but where our urban service boundaries have been designated through metro and through the county with our agreement with the county. So we do have a game plan for where the sewer is supposed to go, where the transportation system is supposed to grow into, and also water as well. So all of the four major categories of infrastructure, which are water, wastewater, storm water, and transportation. So these is just a picture of some of the documents. Mine are extremely tattered because we use them a lot. But here they are then, and they've all been done over the past, you know, almost, most of them have been updated in the past ten years and often are updated on about a ten to fifteen-year cycle. So our wastewater master plan was done several years ago. Our water master plan is our most recent update back in two thousand nineteen. The TSP, which several of you may remember or been a part of earlier on the Planning Commission, that was updated in two thousand fourteen. And we do have a very old surface water master plan that needs, that's next on our list, to be honest. It needs updating, but nonetheless, there's still a lot of projects in there and a lot of good information that we continue to use as we expand our infrastructure system there. Along with that, the other major manual that we look to for development is our Stormwater Management Manual that dictates what needs to be done for low-impact development from a stormwater standpoint. So these are the major sources that we look at. And just as a kind of a side note, this is a picture from our GIS. What we do is if a property is coming in for development, the first thing we do is like, what's the infrastructure out there? And this is one of the many tools that we use, which is our GIS system, which has dozens and dozens of layers of information provided to us to tell us what's out there, generally where it's located in the street or perhaps in an easement. And then that gives us an idea of what, where to go from there. So if a property were to develop, let's say this one, or redevelop this house, we're to redevelop, we would be looking at what are the systems around? Can it continue to handle a connection to our system or does anything need to be extended? So as we talked about earlier, Eric mentioned that, you know, there's not, there's going to be a lot of things that are the same about middle housing that are done for typical residential developments right now. So again, the things that we look at when we're doing this review is we look at how will the single-family resident hook up to sewer and water systems? And maybe even storm water if there happens to be storm water. But how will they also provide stormwater management of their private runoff onsite? And you see a lot of that. That's new in the last ten, fifteen years where we've had to require management of stormwater runoff onsite prior to entering into the public system. The transportation improvements tend to be fairly rare because a single-family home does not require exactions that allow us to do major improvements in front of their roadway or along the frontage of their property. So it might be part of a land use process is when you would see frontage improvements happen, but rarely do frontage improvements like sidewalks come into play unless the area is, has a pre-existing sidewalk layout. We also do a lot to confirm what's the compliance with the neighborhood plans because those neighborhood plans are a part of the comp plan. And oftentimes, there are neighborhood plans that say they want to keep the rural nature, characteristic of the area in perpetuity. So, so we make sure that we don't ask for, if you will, high-density suburban improvements when that doesn't conform with what the neighborhood plans have outlined. So those are the, the things we look at for transportation. Then, of course, we apply SDCs as appropriate for water, sewer, parks, storm, and transportation. And unless they're changing the size of the, you know, if it's a redevelopment, tear-down house, as we call it, tear down and put in a house, replace with just another house, they might not have all of these SDCs occur because they do get credit for what was there before. So unless they're upsizing their meter, their water meter, they wouldn't pay water or sewer SDCs on parks, same thing, one-to-one house. Storm possibly have to pay for storm SDCs if their footprint is bigger. On transportation, no, because again, it's a one-to-one comparison or trade-off. So then, you know, this is, this is pretty much it. A single-family residence comes in, what they apply for is they get a driveway permit. That's one of the few things. And then although this doesn't show it, they'd be hooking up to sewer and hooking up to water. And then somewhere, sometimes often in the front yard or in a side yard, they may have a stormwater system, private stormwater system, and with an overflow that goes to the public. And that's pretty much it from an engineering review standpoint. So what's the question about middle housing? What are those requirements going to be? Well, as, as was mentioned before by Eric and outlined in the bill, we really can only apply the same requirements that we had for single-family residents. So it's really the same things I just spoke about. And really, what this gets down to is this assumption that we just discussed here, which is the one percent for infill and the three percent for greenfield. Those, that level of, of impact on the infrastructure is so negligible that we probably won't be able to even discern that difference. The difference between a house and a duplex, for instance, is really, it's negligible on this system as a whole because those master plans that we had, that I shared with you earlier, those have all been designed to assume a certain level of, of growth over time. They're actually fairly conservative in the sense that they probably anticipate development at a higher rate than they actually has happened. So we have these plans that identify where the infrastructure needs to go, what size it needs to be. And so just the same as we have been applying it for single-family residents, we'd be applying it for this middle housing. And we don't anticipate that, that this will have an impact on any of the existing infrastructure that's already there or the infrastructure plans. Because again, our master plans do go out to the edge of the urban services boundary. So as we annex properties and they come in, maybe they divide, like a lot split is pretty common for annexations. Bringing in two houses is not going, two houses instead of one is not going to make a discernible difference on our infrastructure. So as mentioned earlier with Eric, we really don't anticipate, or I don't think we'd even have a case to go after to say that we need to do this, the IBTR, as Eric called it, the IBTR, the, it, there'd be nothing to be gained, and I don't think we'd be able to make a case that this proposed House Bill would have a detrimental effect on our infrastructure or that we couldn't handle it. So with that, any questions? It's pretty simple. We, we, we won't anticipate doing too many changes.
Thank you, City Engineer Rooney. Yeah, I'd like to open it up for Commissioner Questions. Commissioner Beckett?
Yes, if you add a property to a property, a home or duplex or triplex to a property, and it's on a very narrow street where there isn't room to force parking onto the street, can you zone it such that the new housing provides enough parking on the property?
Can we zone it? Well, the zoning is the same, I think.
Well, as I read the rules, it didn't sound like that we would be allowed to require sufficient property or parking on the property.
Yeah, I think Commissioner Beckett, I know, and I, I remember, I recall your commenting on, on parking in the past and looking at, you know, opportunities to get more parking. If we're not able to require more parking on the site and the builder isn't providing additional parking on their own, then where is that parking? Is there an externality? Is it going to spill over into the neighborhood? Is there actually space along the roadway where one could park? There isn't always room for someone to park along the road, along our local streets. And I think what I, what I take away from Eric, from Ms. Rooney's presentation is that for single-family homes and then soon for middle housing, we will not have the code authority to require a street widening, for example, to provide a, an on-street parking space. So that's something that we're, we're aware of and we're going to be having to work through as part of this process. Now, the options that the city has, of course, are either to, you know, establish, we have to have a level playing field between middle housing and single-family homes. So if we're looking at additional infrastructure requirements for middle housing, we would then have to apply those to single-family housing as well. So you will have policy choices to make through this process. We just need to, to get into the process, have that discussion.
Yeah.
Commissioner Fisher?
I actually have two. Let me, let me ask the first one. And it's a variation of what I asked before. Planning Director Scott, you said that the SDRs are considered commercial. Right? How does that impact on what our requirements are for infrastructure?
I had to mute myself. Yeah, so the short-term rentals are an accessory used to a single-family home. They're a commercial use of home occupation and, and they're, there are no infrastructure requirements for home occupations for, for short-term rentals because they are considered to be accessory to the single-family home. In other words, they don't have any greater demand on water, sewer, transportation than an existing single-family house. That's what makes them accessory. That, that's what keeps them in that residential zone or allows them to be in the residential zone without it becoming a commercial, primary commercial use, if that makes sense. So those are presumed to have equal to or lesser impact than the primary dwelling.
Second question, and this is probably off-field. We were talking about the Stafford Hamlet. If that, I don't know what their plans are, but if they're looking at coming into the city or getting city services, how will that impact? What's going on here?
Yeah, well, the Stafford area, if, if or when that area or any part of it comes into our urban services boundary, because that's what would happen, would have to happen first, then Erica and her team would be updating our public facility master plans, our infrastructure master plans, the four or five documents that she just described, to plan for that area. And so then there would be questions around water supply and storage, not only the pipe sizes, but, you know, where's the water going to come from? Or more importantly, how are we going to sewer that area? Because that's absolutely the issue. So that master planning, you know, would have, would have to occur. And then for middle housing, middle housing would be an overlay onto that. And then we may be looking at greenfield and looking at the assumptions around growth rate for middle housing as the city is updating its master plans, I think. And I'll defer to Erica, but that's, that's my understanding of how that would work.
Correct. None of our, our. Correct, none of our our master plans currently do not have a plan for any of that Hamlet area, the Stafford area. We go kind of close because the city is up there at Stafford, but we did not have, none of them have that plan in there because it was, it isn't identified yet. And we would do all of that as a part of of bringing them in, and it would be some pretty major steady efforts and some planning efforts to come up with those infrastructure plans.
Thank you.
I'm going to take a question for Commissioner similar, and then we'll come back to Commissioner Lee after that.
I was just wondering what was going to happen with the the current STC waiver, the cost waivers for ADU. Once House Bill two thousand and one come into effect and we're basically mandated to allow the greater density on all single family lots, will that that lapse? And essentially, there will no longer be that incentive or will the city uphold that current incentive?
Yeah, Eric can probably fill fill us in on on this and kind of how the bill addresses incentives, which is that's what the SDC waivers are. They're an incentive for accessory dwelling units and for multifamily affordable housing. Those incentives wouldn't necessarily have to change. I think the kind of the issue there is that the bill requires that the city allow duplexes on every lot that's owned for single family. The bill defines duplexes as two attached dwellings on a lot or at the city's discretion. It could mean two detached dwellings on a lot. So then you'd ask, well, what's the difference between an ADU and a duplex? And right now, the only distinction in our code would be the size limitation on an ADU. You're allowed to have one ADU per single family lot, provided it doesn't exceed eight hundred square feet, except that there is some allowance for up to a thousand square feet if it's a remodel, if it's a conversion. And that's it, a duplex wouldn't have that size restriction. So in turn, anything, you know, that second unit, if it's larger than eight hundred square feet, would not be eligible for the fee waiver. So there there would continue to be this incentive for smaller, presumably more affordable units if the city kept the SDC waiver in place. That's a, that's a really good topic for discussion, I think, when this comes up to council or what kind of incentives, if any, the city would want to have for middle housing.
And I guess just on that note, there is actually a requirement from the state, but the city consider potential incentives to for middle housing. So, you know, I think cities are expected to sort of look at additional incentives. We're also, you know, required to do a housing production strategy that will look a little more broadly at different strategies that the city has identified to produce needed housing. So it's possible that if we remove an existing incentive, we'll have to sort of look at different potential housing production strategies when that time comes and sort of, you know, go a little bit further in our findings related to considering incentives for middle housing.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lee.
Two questions. Does the bill say, and this goes back to Commissioner Beckett's question regarding parking? We can't mandate parking has to be absorbed on the property. Does the bill say that that's can't be part of the planning?
No, that, I mean, so the parking requirements would actually be fairly similar to the sort of what would be allowed to require, what the city would be allowed to require by the state would be more or less one space per unit roughly. And that's similar to, you know, how parking is provided today, except for maybe larger multifamily units where there are different calculations. But yeah, regardless, there is a provision that will allow cities to require that parking be provided onsite. There is flexibility for cities to say that it could be provided on the street, but there's no requirement that they do that.
Okay, and then going to the surface or the storm water retention, that new construction today is my understanding from what I see, has to be retained onsite, which takes up square footage of the site. So if we have parking, if we have a fourplex or four cottages, we have to have retention for all the surface water plus parking for them all. That's going to necessitate a good sized piece of land, wouldn't it?
It certainly could. It's a, it's a struggle now, even with single family homes in that they size it properly to accommodate all of those things. Part onsite parking and storm water and making sure that there is adequate room with all the setbacks and things like that, that also are a part of any single family resident. The same thing would apply in that if you've, you've only got X amount of space, how do you balance all of those needs, whether it's for one house or for quad situation or duplex? So the same things would apply. Now, they could, it's possible, we haven't gotten into these details, rather than having four separate storm water units within that property, they'd probably be able to do one, you know, but yes.
It still has to be sized to accommodate it.
Absolutely, whatever the footprint is, yeah.
Would the state at some point say, Lake Oswego, you're you're too restrictive? Your, your, your needs for to accommodate middle housing are are too restrictive? Can they come back to us and say, because of what we say we have to have? Do we get our hands slapped?
As long, I I think as long as we're conditioning them to do the same things that they would do if they were a single family home, I don't think that that's the issue. I believe it's applying the same restrictions that we apply today to a single family home.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
And also, you know, with with respect to, you know, what we're talking about in terms of parking, that would be, you know, talking about the state's own minimum requirements for parking. So we would be based on at least what I was talking about before, that would be sort of exactly what they're they're looking for based on, you know, their own rules. But they shouldn't come back.
Yeah, that's right, Eric. So there are some, there are some standards in the rules themselves that are pretty much cut and dry, like parking. And then there are other standards that are more of a performance standard, right? Like citing and design, the the, there's a model code that tells us that we can, the state says we can adopt the model code and that has certain citing and design standards, or alternatively, what we're, what we think we're pursuing is our own set of standards and they don't specify everything. So we have to kind of keep going back to what we regulate for single family homes and ask ourselves, is this any more restricted? And if it is, then the state could say, oh, you're causing additional costs and or delay for permitting single family homes. And that's, that's the, that's the standard is, are you causing? What is it, Eric? Undo cost or delay?
Or delay.
Yeah.
The terminology in the bill.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sumner, did you have a question?
Oh, I was just wondering, kind of following up on Commissioner Leek's question about, you know, the the stormwater management. I I'm not super familiar with the Cody, the the city's stormwater management code and and requirement. So, Mr. Rooney, please bear with me. But I'm assuming that the the typical condition would be to build a bioswale onsite and then basically capture your runoff and let it permeate back into the the ground, essentially. Is the city looking at at potential alternatives to that? Is it, instead of having a a fully or an impermeable driveway, looking at a pervious driveway and being able to count that towards something versus the size of a bioswale or or a raised planter that's capturing all this? Are there potential solutions that the city's looking into to make it easier? Or, I don't know, more straightforward when when people come in and want to develop these these types of properties?
You, it is, stormwater is difficult, there's no question about it. And there are a multitude of options available to developers already, according to our stormwater management manual. And so there's a, there's a menu, if you will. But yes, you know, infiltrating with onsite is the first and foremost what they're supposed to do. And there's multiple different ways to do that. Pervious pavement is one of them that accommodates the pavement, the driveway, but it's usually not big enough to accommodate the whole house as well. So you've got the house, you've got the driveway, you've got a little sidewalk or pathway to the backyard. They might, if you have a pool, you'll have a concrete deck, all those kinds of things that contribute. And so that is that balancing act that goes on today with single family homes as to making sure that, again, enough space is left to to use one of the multitude of of options available. And that's why they have a geotech come onboard to identify what's best for this particular site, based on the soils, based on the the slopes are a big issue and a kind of a limiting factor for development regarding different options there. And then also what other infrastructure is close by that they may or may not be able to tie into. So we have a lot of that issues. It's, it is complicated. It won't be any different for for middle housing. And I think that's the key that we have to keep in mind, that whether you're building one house today or you're building a quadplex in the future, still same thing. If it's three thousand square feet of impermeable surface, you'll need to treat that storm water prior to equating it to the public system.
Commissioners, any other questions for staff? I don't see any. Commissioner Beckett?
Yes, about a decade from now, our gas powered cars will be gone and replaced with electric vehicles. I wonder how that factors in. More and more families will have just one car at home and they'll push a button on their iPhone and an automatic car will drive up on command and take them wherever they want to go. That's going to change our roadways and our neighborhoods a lot. I don't know whether any thought has been given to that in any of these plans. I'm exaggerating only a little bit.
Well, certainly, there's a lot of theory around autonomous vehicles being available, like you say, to just dial it up on the app on your phone and you have a car come and pick you up. You know, I think that 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 could do a lot towards helping us with congestion and parking and things like that as well. But I think it's going to take us a little while to get there. And we'll be in this transition zone for for a bit, yeah.
I would just add the code changes slower than reality. So the the requirement is to meet the code requirements. And you can decide what those code requirements are, you know, as time marches on.
Objects in the mirror are not closer than they are, they're actually very far away.
Commissioners, any further questions or any feedback that the commission would like to give to staff? I think what we heard tonight is staff's direction sounds very reasonable. It doesn't look like, you know, the city would be in a good spot to actually request an infrastructure based time extension, given the small percentages that were outlined and that, you know, the the city has planned for rather conservatively, even they've planned for, you know, growth and that the requirements are to meet the singly, single family home requirements. So, you know, I I feel like, you know, the commission agrees with staff's direction here in not pursuing an infrastructure based extension. Commissioners, any specific comments on that? Commissioner Stewart?
Yeah, I would agree with Chair Heap. I think, you know, short of not yet knowing where recommended concentrations of middle housing might occur from sort of the analysis that's happening right now, it's hard for me really to pinpoint whether or not, you know, the infrastructure would be sufficient or not if we don't know, you know, where this concentration of middle housing might go. So that being said, I mean, I have to, I have to concur with, you know, the direction I think staff is suggesting. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other final comments? On staff, is there any questions that remain for the commission or shall we conclude?
No remaining questions for me.
You know, that was really the main, the main point of this was to brief you on how we approach infrastructure generally and how it would apply for middle housing under the rules. And the infrastructure based time extension just, you know, I mean, we agree with you, it's just not a viable alternative for us. Moreover, the rules, the state rules allow the city or or, I guess, recognize the city's authority currently to require developers to put in infrastructure, if it's a subdivision or, you know, to to exact those improvements. And if, you know, someone's coming along and they they want to put a fourplex out at the end of you know, a private access lane somewhere and it doesn't have, you know, a two inch water line or whatever Erica and her staff say they need to do that, well, they're going to have to put it in. I mean, there's no, there's no obligation for the city to put that infrastructure in for development. The development has to provide it themselves. So we've, we feel like, I think, going back to what Eric said, that, you know, not making the requests or not receiving the extension actually gives us a lot more flexibility and autonomy to solve the problems the way that we see fit. So, thank you.
Thank you, Director Siegel. So I'd like to conclude the work session tonight. Thanks, City Engineer Rooney, for coming and giving us the excellent presentation and to rest of staff, Eric and staff for also giving us input. Thank you. So I'd like to move on to other business. I had no other business, item number nine on the agenda. Director Siegel, any other businesses staff would like to?
Just an announcement that the, you know, the tentative date for the first city council meeting in the new council chambers has shifted. They were looking at, they were hopeful that they would have their first meeting in the council chambers in May. However, due to ongoing construction and assembly of the council chambers and and the uncertainty around the the state and the county's COVID risk rating, they're putting that out into June. And so the next target date for the, having the first council meeting in the new building is June fifteenth. And then if that all goes as planned, the the first planning commission meeting in the building would be on June twenty first, so it'll be your second meeting in June. So I just wanted to make sure you're aware of that. And that's the only other business that I have. We can talk about the schedule update when you're ready.
Sure, one question on that, Director Siegel, is I thought I read somewhere that the city hall, city hall is now open. Is that correct? But as far as, you know, conducting meetings for the council or for the commission, that's going to be based on the dates and the information you're providing. But overall, city hall is now open, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, that's, thank you, Chair, that's, that's a good point. The city hall opened to walk in customers on Monday, the nineteenth, I believe. And we are still taking, you know, we will still, of course, serve the public by phone or by video conference. We'll, we'll, you know, provide services remotely if that's what people prefer. Although if they're, for some reason, there's something that they really, you know, want to come to city hall and and meet with someone in person, we're open. And, you know, of course, we're minding social distancing and masks are required inside the building. But we are watching the the Oregon Health Authority on the county restrictions because it's, it's changing and we're, you know, we're having to make adjustments here and there, so we'll definitely let you know if anything changes.
I think you, Director Siegel. So I'd like to move on to the next agenda item, schedule review. Director Siegel, would you like to give us an update on the schedule?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. So the planning commission's schedule, what would be your next regularly scheduled meeting on May tenth? There are no agenda items, so unless we hear otherwise from Rob from Chair Heap, that meeting would be canceled. And then the next meeting that you would have is the second meeting in May was at the twenty fourth, if that's right. And you do have a work session scheduled to review the findings and I guess conclusions of the first phase of work on House Bill two thousand and one. So that's the beginning, that that would be the first of two meetings that you've designated for reviewing that work product. And before that, I forgot to mention backing up, on the eighteenth of May, you have a joint meeting with the city council to get a, I guess, the council will receive a preview of the work that you'll be looking at in more detail over the next two meetings. So that's the agenda for May and in the first part of June.
Right, thank you, Director Siegel. Any questions or comments on the schedule? I see none. So I'd like to adjourn the meeting. Thanks to Commissioners and for staff and to all of those who came out and gave public comment tonight on the short term rentals. Really appreciate the comments we received, they were very good. Thank you to everyone. So, good night, meetings.
Thanks, everybody.
Bye.
Have a good night.
Night, everybody.
Thank you, thank you, Scott.